Good evening, everyone. Call the council meeting for Thursday, May the ninth to order. As you can see, this meeting is being held in person. It can also be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three or on the Internet by accessing bucksportmain.gov and selecting agendas and minutes and choosing this meeting and clicking on the video button next to the meeting. Questions or comments may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing eslussard@bucksportmain.gov or during the meeting by calling three zero seven eight zero three zero. I will remind everyone here that this would be a great time to make sure your phone is on silent or however you choose to make sure it doesn't go off during the meeting. Also, I do want to mention, because it is on the agenda, we do have an executive session later for town manager evaluation and persons wishing to provide feedback to the town council can attend this meeting and speak during public comments or email myself, please, at P Bissonette at bucksportmain.gov. I think that covers everything. Roll call.
Counselor Mark Eastman.
Here.
Counselor Tracy Hare.
Here.
Mayor Paul Bissonette.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Steve Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Ed Rankin.
Here.
Counselors Ormsby and Gobber are excused this evening.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Presentation of any town council recognitions, there aren't any. Consider minutes from our previous meetings. We have the minutes from the April twenty fifth meeting. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review those. Questions or comments?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed. We have a number of pieces of correspondence to acknowledge. The first is the Verona Police Call from April the thirtieth, twenty twenty four, as well as the Down East Transportation Ridership Report from March of twenty twenty four. Additional, we have seven thank yous from the following agencies, et cetera. Red, the Red Cross, Eastern Area Agency on Aging, Northern Light Health Hospice, Families First Community Center, WIC, Hospice Volunteers of Hancock Valley, and Life Flight. Any questions? Okay, next is ordinances to consider or introduce. We do not have any this evening. Next is, we have two discussion items. The first, the Ball Field Wall Committee or the Ball Field Committee met earlier this evening.
Yeah, we discussed a couple of different things. The, the potential for the long-term move up to adjacent to the Miles Lane and Wasson Field has a sports complex, baseball softball field. But in the meantime, it was the, the committee favored that the council focus on what repairs we need to do on the field now because this would be three, four, five years away. And we need repairs like the backstop, the, the wall needs to come out. Suggestions were to slope it back to where it used to be with either grass or preferably crushed rock, rap type situation. Of course, we need engineering on that, somebody to look into this and see the safety aspects of parking vehicles. If the wall is gone, maybe there isn't any, but we need somebody to confirm that. And Josh Jackson, coach of the baseball team, has also requested that we put some sort of netting up along first baseline for safety for foul balls, which I highly agree with. And that's, that's about it for now.
Great. Next will be the Infrastructure Committee, also met earlier this evening.
Yeah, we had two topics to discuss. One was the animal shelter and we made the recommendation to look at a smaller design behind the town garage in the wooded area that Luke pointed out. And as far as the skate park, they're looking to identify a permanent location. They just want to keep the conversation open as to where that might end and that there needs to be more communication between the groups using those areas.
Great, thank you. Next, we have two agenda items this evening. The first is resolve twenty twenty four dash four eight to approve a resolve for the June twenty twenty four ballot that would obligate an amount not to exceed one million, two hundred thousand dollars as a match for a village partnership initiative project for implementation of the plan developed as part of the Planning Partnership Initiative Grant with the Maine Department of Transportation. Motion approved?
Second.
Second, questions, comments?
This is part of your process. You had voted last year to put this on the June ballot. The way it gets there is through a resolve and then a warrant. That article that identifies the money, the funding source and repayment obligation.
All those in favor? Opposed? Next is resolve twenty twenty-
Mayor Bissonette, just a quick side note to that.
Yes.
When is, Rich is gone, there's a V I-
It's-
V I P.
Tuesday the fourteenth.
Tuesday the fourteenth.
Tuesday the fourteenth up to the Performing Arts Center.
That's correct.
At six.
Six o'clock. Yep. Next is resolve twenty twenty four dash four nine to, forty nine, excuse me, to approve the paving price for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five paving at the same rate as the twenty twenty three year.
Which was eighty-two?
Eighty-three, forty-two, right up.
It's, it, the, the resolve, which you don't have in your packet because I just realized I didn't put it in until I didn't have the price. Von Thibodeau the second has done paving, the paving for the town for the past several years, did the paving and the work for their old reclamation project and is always consistently lower than our other bidders and has offered to hold the price at last year's price for paving, even though current bidding coming out is several dollars higher a ton than what they're bidding. And, and so I'm asking you to, to set aside that protocol and award the bid in that amount to Thibodeau for this year when we do our paving so that we can not see the higher numbers.
Questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to-
Right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Opposed, thank you. Nine is resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. We do have one listed on the agenda and there, the town managers requested that we also add both the school warrant as well as the town warrant for the referendum in June. If I could have a motion to make that agenda addendum.
Motion for the agenda addendum.
Second.
In favor? Opposed, thank you. So the first item will be the appointment of election clerks.
You have a list in your packet from nominated and appointed election clerk that Jackie gets from the parties as well as those that are unenrolled.
Questions? Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Opposed, thank you. Next will be the approv, I just the approval-
To sign the-
To sign the, and approve the school-
The school.
Warrant for the June referendum. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
Favor? Thank you. And we'll do the same as well to approve the town warrant for the referendum in June. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Any questions? Did you say second?
I will second.
Okay.
Mark's motion, yes.
We have this, a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed, thank you. They'll be making their way around, all right. Next is the town manager report, which I haven't even looked at yet.
Um, and I even found my own without taking yours, so we're good. I want to thank Captain Wardwell from the Fire Department for a successful grant application to the Maine Municipal Association Safety Grant Program for streamlight flashlights, cones, barricades, and extrication gloves. The grant totals two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Every grant we receive through the initiative of one of our employees saves us money on our budgeting. So thank you to Captain Wardwell for this successful grant. I want to thank everyone who's reached out with condolences on the passing of my mother last Friday. I appreciate your kindness and thoughtfulness. The dementia is an ugly condition and it was a long road for her. The Marina in the Good News Department opens on May fifteenth. We look forward to another successful voting season here in Bucksport. I want to thank everyone who participated in helping with to bridge the gap race this past weekend. A reminder that the Make Bucksport Beautiful Cleanup Day will be held on Saturday, May eighteenth. Trash bags and ice cream cone coupons can be picked up at the town office that morning from eight AM to nine thirty AM. And finally, the Conservation Commission met with Jake Meyer on Tuesday, April thirtieth to listen to his proposals regarding Tree City USA and implementation of the forestry plan done in two thousand twelve. The committee asked for more information, which has been provided and indicated that they would schedule another meeting when they had had an opportunity to review that information.
Thank you, Sue. Any questions for Sue? Next is set public hearings and/or hold public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits. We have three. The first is liquor license and food service license for the Bucksport Golf Club. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Next is an innkeeper's license for Fort Knox Inn. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Questions? Second, all those in favor? Next is Subway Food Service License. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Discussion of items not on the agenda for council in public. Would you like to go get Mr. Rutella? I'm pretty sure, if you wouldn't mind, I'm pretty sure he has something to discuss. It sounds like he's discussing, it looks like he's discussing something outside. Wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
We have things to do tonight, Rich.
I apologize, that is very unprofessional of me. I, excuse me. Um, yes, I would like for the town to consider, and I'm not sure which committee this would need to go to, but acquiring a parcel of land that has just become available for a project or projects that may need to happen down the road for backup for the town. A parcel of oh oh two dash oh two nine, as you can see, our trail already goes through this property. Now, GIS might be a little off because this is also the CMP easement. This property is owned by Wendy Carpenter and has become available for sale. I have walked in this vicinity.
Where is this, Rich?
This is behind what is known as Miles Lane Field one, two, and three, or commonly referred to as the Wasson Field.
Okay.
The varsity soccer field is right here.
Okay.
This is nine acres of land that has become available for sale
at a cost of seventy-nine thousand dollars. Yeah.
And when we talk about planning and thinking about the long term, we have a baseball field which is currently not on campus. Is in, some of the facilities there are original to when the field was there. It has a pipe-
This is what we were referring to as future complex, basically.
Yes, yes, okay, okay. I was nowhere near that, okay. That other piece.
Uh, you do have a little creek that runs through, but it's mostly on the town side. We have bridges that bring you over the creek onto the trails. One specifically behind the Wasson Field and one down here by the ice rink. You've got a big covert, covert over there. The town crew maintains that, it's right behind the ice rink. It's a great parcel for the town because of its proximity to the town-owned fields, which are under a Land Water Conservation Fund Trust. It could also help us maneuver a situation that happened unbeknownst to any of us that are here. The LWCF was twenty-plus acres of land off of Broadway, which means the, the fields were purchased and created prior to Miles Lane's existence. So to access the fields came through here. I have to get my facts straight, but this parcel right here may have at one point been owned by the town and was given to Bucksport Regional Health Center. This parking lot was not supposed to be anything but for recreation. The, the state and federal government know that that belongs to the health center. There's nothing we can do, we have to mitigate this. When coordinates were used to map out the location of the twenty-plus acres, accidentally, I believe, this parcel of land here on Versa Lane and those apartments were also built on that. We never owned that, that was always owned by, by the owners. So even though it was accidental, the town still signed off that we owned that. So we have to make up for this loss. And then the last loss that we have is the childcare center. The childcare center is also part of that. We were not supposed to sell that off for that purpose either. So all I'm told when I spoke to Mr. Bet, down in Augusta, it's about five acres of land we need to acquire, which will help us in the long run applying for funds through LWCF to not only repair the playground but also the tennis courts. We can then in turn use LWCF in the future, up to a million dollars, and we'd have to pay fifty fifty, but to construct fields or recreation there as well. It's a lot and I hope I haven't lost anyone.
Is that a landlocked piece right now?
That piece-
No, it's right away at the bottom.
There is.
Is, is right down here off of Versa Lane.
Okay.
And it's up for sale. That helps.
This, yes, and it's for sale today.
How much was it for again, Rich?
I believe seventy-nine thousand is the figure I was told.
And it's how many acres?
I think it's one, nine, ten, nine, ten, somewhere in that. That won't tell you, Rich, because that carries all the way to Main Street.
Oh, that's right, to, to US Route one, so yeah, that parcel itself is roughly nine acres, which is four more than the five.
Good job.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for that.
So, so again, even, even if at some point we don't, we decide not to do anything with sports complexes, and I would mind the council to remember that that baseball field has a hundred-plus-year-old pipe. If that pipe blows, where's the baseball team playing? The, the only contingency in place for baseball is the middle, the newly constructed middle school field. Softball has four options. If the high school field were to go, they've got Reggie Gin, which was rebuilt to the identical specs of the high school field and we had to use that field for our play day this year. We have the Wasson Field, which is a softball field, and we have the middle school. So softball currently has four options where baseball has two. And if parking is an issue with the town's council is saying, well, where are you going to park? If you do make these fields, I can speak to LWCF and see this whole parcel of Wasson Field, make that a parking spot. You can then walk over the bridge, thank you, sir, walk over the bridge and get to the complex. Baseball, softball, a shared concession stand, hitting pavilion, you know, it, it can go on and on and on. What it does is it brings everybody onto campus if we decide that's the use we want to do. If we decide we want to build this and create offshoot of trails to, because it has to be purchased and used for recreation. We have to mitigate what, what we did. And by we, I mean whoever signed off from the town to sell the parcels of land we shouldn't have.
But even with a complex, we could incorporate more trails after the fact, after we know what, what forestry we're going to have left.
Yep. It, it's a good parcel, like I said, I didn't walk the whole thing, I ain't no IU, but I, I walked a good parcel, right behind the varsity field and it was dry.
And wouldn't it, to use your phrase, if we purchased four more than the five? If we did do, it would, it would give us flexibility to do something with parking on some of the existing property. I, I don't want to assume that, I'm asking, I guess I should.
If we include it in the plans to, uh, we are building a complex and it will have parking? It, it's what we did, um, uh, with basketball court, with basketball court, we did go parking there, right? So recreation is expected to have parking.
Okay.
Whether it's automobile, bicycle, or motorcycle.
Jay, glad you're here. Is it possible? Is it all fucking possible? The school and the traffic here right now is brutal. The people trying to get through and kids running all over the road and everything. Would it be possible if a road were to loop around and do like a one-way traffic scenario north and then another one-way south to help take care of some of those problems?
Anything is possible, it's just a matter of money.
Yeah.
We've got the power lines.
I don't see to get on the money and stop.
Power li, oh, power lines, yeah, we have power lines.
And, and, okay, that's something we'd have to get an easement for that piece of land there.
This, this is power lines, this right here is a pump station to the middle school that's main water.
Yeah.
That's what you've got there. We've also talked, and I would have to double check the records now to see exactly where that boundary line is for LWCF. But at one point we spoke with about this portion of land, uh, one of the portions of land.
Right, right, where you're, right there.
For the childcare center, which is outside, I, I'm going to say is outside of LWCF because it's located right there, so, but I'll, I'll get confirmation. So that's the, the other option, yeah, potentially the money where the play itself, maybe putting a road in there to help ease the congestion of the Miles Lane traffic at the, because of the Miles Lane School, quite frankly.
Side conversation, but where my head is, where the money would come from. We had talked about potentially acquiring the solar panels on top of the town garage this year for a cost of how much?
Eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Eighty-seven thousand dollars. This would be a way, when we had, that's an option that we're going to have every year coming up moving forward, potentially, correct?
You also have funds that went into miscellaneous income this year from the sale of a property that was in excess of the funds that were owed.
That's right. The bonds.
In excess of that.
Yeah. And what I was getting at from that would be, that would, I'd rather redirect the money towards the future on this than a-
Well, the money's already there, the proceeds from that sale.
Yeah, that's a good point to make.
But it is a good conversation because it came up in the boss, baseball committee meeting too, that one thing that we have to be mindful of is, is with any of these projects, the traffic that it then generates and I, and so whether we're talking about what we do even as a short-term fix over at the, what is now, the baseball field, remembering that in a few short years, we're going to have a, a development on the other side of McDonald Street. Or for years, back when I was on the school committee, I used to hear a lot about the traffic in the morning at Miles Lane. Traffic in the morning and traffic during soccer games and even during football games occasionally, although I have to imagine that's been relieved a little bit. But still, I think it's that type of conversation that we do need to make sure that we're standing on top of. Because it's a good conversation and even if, even if, for example, Deputy Mayor Bishop's initial suggestion isn't workable, is there something close to it that is? And let the conversation drive itself. And I, and yes, I do understand that's more money and, and we do need to be mindful of that. But at the same time, I, I just have to ask the question whether it would be worth it, worth it to go through a lot of the things that we've talked about and still have a traffic problem in front of Miles Lane? So anyway.
What would we need to, would we have to put this on a resolve? Can we make a motion to acquire this time?
You'd have to put it on a resolve.
Yeah.
But it doesn't need to go to committee.
Not if you don't want it to.
Yeah, I personally don't want it.
No, me either.
Well, there's, the majority of you are present, so there's a quorum here. You can decide to put on a resolve for the next meeting.
I make a motion, we put on a resolve for the next meeting.
Second. Questions, comments?
And with that, who's going to reach out to?
I would.
Wendy.
I think we know the Realtor.
Yeah, I'm abstaining from this conversation. Okay.
I'm telling you, Rich might already be in contact with her.
Rich knows a guy.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it makes sense, especially with the discussion about the skate park and we've got sort of a congestion of activity and traffic. I think this gives us some room to think on our feet and gets us out of a bind. There's no other way out of that bind really, is there?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be so inclined to make that motion financially based on the fact that we've done well with the tax-acquired property scenario this year to recover that and some of the other things that we're not pursuing. This is a, this is a good move for the future, thank you.
I mean, are we locked in with the mistake that was made to, to, we have to fix it, right? So regardless, we have to-
Or we don't get funded. Or we do, or we just don't get funded.
Or jeopardize the grant, the money to move forward.
I would say whoever was here during the RSU times, a lot of communities made the mistake that when they sold off their buildings and their fields, if they had LWCF, we didn't do that.
Talk to me about mistakes on selling property.
So, so we did, I mean, five acres compared to what it could have been. Um, and like I said, I had, I had Public Safety Director Gagian with me when we had this conversation just to make sure that we were all on the same page.
Will the five acres be less the baseball field that we're adding? Because that's probably what, a couple acres, seven acres, right now?
But that's pre-existing, we already own it, correct?
The baseball field is currently not in LWCF.
But if we bring it in, does that count for, like say?
Correct, it can't be something we already own. We have to acquire something new for the use of recreation.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look, think about it, you gave that.
Yeah, I, I asked if actually if we could put the football field in it. He said he's never had anyone do that and he recommended we not because he thought that, going off on a little tangent here, but if something ever happened to the high school and you needed to build a new high school, why not build it where the football field is and then you can move your football field down? You always need to have a plan down the line on what if X goes under, where's Y going to happen? Y can help us in a lot of different areas, whether it's a ball field or not or a temporary school or, or, or something. It, it abuts us, our trail goes through it.
Who would we use for a Realtor for our purposes as a town? What would we, what would we do in the, for writing up an offer? Would it be the town attorney for a purchase and sale agreement or?
The town manager would place a call to the, the Realtor for the-
Property.
Seller.
Yeah.
Saying that we are making an offer, we are putting a resolve on the sixteenth, which is next week.
Yeah. And we can, we can extend that for a purchase and sale agreement to be contingent upon the approval of a resolve. I could buy that property tomorrow and would be out of it, is what I'm getting at.
Yep, I get it.
But if we put in the purchase and sale agreement immediately that says contingent on the approval of a resolve from the Bucksport Town Council or however you want to word it, then that would get our foot in the door on that property. Yeah, I would recommend we do that.
Okay.
Um, we did, there is a motion and a second on the, open, so I, I will remind you, I believe we're going to have an extension and we do need four votes to pass anything this evening, so. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Rich, there was something else that you've been working on that you have a meeting on Tuesday. We're going to talk a little bit about your-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, oh, yes, we're still on items on the agenda, yes. Uh, so- Uh, so I'd like to, I, I did invite the members of the council and the Economic Development Committee, there's a post on Facebook, an ad in today's newspaper, but I'd like to also invite the public to the VPI Open House for the downtown Bucksport to get the facts, see the renderings, provide your input. It'll be Tuesday upcoming, which is the fourteenth, at six o'clock at the Bucksport Performing Arts Center, one hundred Miles Lane. Please come.
Rich, thank you for putting that together. The other versions of that, that we were told would take place, never did, and you picked up the ball that was dropped on that and made it happen.
Caitlin and I did it together, teamwork, sir.
So, thank you for putting that together.
Yes, thank you.
Any other, anyone else from the public? All right. Next is upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignment and scheduling of committee meetings. Uh, obviously there is the one that's on the agenda, which is, uh, we do, uh, need to change, uh, the meeting, the regular council meeting that's scheduled for the twenty-third um, to next week, May the sixteenth. I assume there's no opposition there?
No.
Do you need a motion?
Do we need a motion? Oh, yep, Chair Lintan, a motion.
Motion to approve moving the meeting to May sixteenth, twenty, twenty-four.
Second.
Second, any questions?
All those in favor?
Opposed, you?
I need, I need a services committee meeting?
Yes, we need a services committee meeting for six forty-five. Prior to the next meeting, I have a candidate for the community resi- the resilience committee who is in, um.
Head head one, two.
For the baseball field committee.
Swap out superintendents.
Well, okay, so we have two candidates, one, Mr. Goss for, um, community resilience.
Okay.
And, um, Mr. Trup for.
While we're doing him, then we might as well do him for economic development at the same time, all month.
Okay, now we've got too many things to make. Okay.
But that's, that one, services. Any other committees before the next meeting? Next is the budget. And I will, I can give you a few minutes, if you need to, or anyone, a few minutes. I know we've moved right along, but if anybody needs a, a minute or two, certainly have it.
Take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Let's take a five-minute break while I make this thing bigger.
That'd be fine. Yep.
Stay at that rate. So that is, um. As I said, it's pretty much the, the, the normal raise, the, um. The, the things that we're always do and then the only change is the addition back in of the paving budget.
What do we rent for equipment that's that heavy of a line item? What is our equipment rental?
We rent cranes.
Well, no, under that line is the Route forty-six contract.
Oh, and is it under the equipment rental?
It's under that equipment line.
Okay, alright, that makes sense.
Did we leave the cranes in or they all went to Rich?
They all went to Rich.
Yeah, it's Route forty-six, that's the.
Okay.
And if we ever have to rent some other outside piece of equipment that we don't.
Right, yeah, I just, uh, that was, that's just.
That's a big number.
That's a big number, I'm just thinking, what, what are we renting that we're not buying?
That's Route forty-six.
Okay.
That's Route forty-six.
Right.
Everyone.
Yep.
Oh, Christmas trees. Which is better than words that occasionally come out of my mouth. Okay, the next one is the town garage. Um. Uh, which is, um, pretty much identical to the. Probably, that is, that is supplies, maintenance, repair, telephone, heating, fuel, and electricity, um, the. Questions? I don't, I don't have anything exciting to say about the town garage.
Alright.
I, I will tell you that what isn't in here is that in the future, we have to look at, at a new electrical system for the building and some other items. We talked about what would happen if you use that building up front and Jay had indicated certainly in the interim, they could, there's a space on the second floor that could be repurposed for an office. But, um, there are some things like the electrical system and things that will take a higher priority, but that's not out of this budget. This is literally keeping the lights on and the heating, keeping it heated and.
Do we have money?
From having the doors not get smashed into, hm?
Do we have money allocated in this year's budget for the electrical and like the bathroom?
For an evaluation of all of that stuff, yes.
But not to do it?
No, it's gonna, it's gonna take some thought about the long-term future and how, you know, making sure that it's set up to be what we need it to be in the long-term. I'm not saying we need another public works garage at all, but I'm saying that it's gonna be a planned event. You know, we'll figure it all out this year and look towards budgeting what isn't in reserve for next year. I'm not kicking it down the road, I just can't do it all in one year.
So we're kicking the can.
I said we're not. You can't build without a plan.
This is the planning year.
This is the planning year for evaluating it, and we know that because when we try to do things, we can't connect to things easily. Our, our generators, exhibit A, you know, we can't really connect easily given the electrical system we have there. Um, the transfer station, the transfer station, um, it's got a down number and that is entirely related to, the disposal costs and the number of tons that we're, we're disposing of things that I have whittled down a bit based on how many were, how much money we're actually spending as opposed to what we thought we might, over time, not just in a one-year span, but um, other than that, it's, uh, again, a, a, um, a maintenance budget, it's not a new one. However, here's another thing, and this is not kicking it down the can, but in the next month or so, we're gonna need to have an infrastructure committee meeting to talk about the future of the transfer station in a bigger way. We, one of our trailers that we, um, haul waste with, that's a complicated compaction thing, um, is at the end of its useful life, we have one other one. They cost six figures. And before we spend that much money on a trailer to keep doing what we've been doing the same way we've been doing it, I'd like the council to look at the idea of, of using, having a compactor the way we have one for the recyclables that, and have that picked up and taken away as opposed to maintaining that bigger infrastructure. It would mean more frequent hauling, but to look at some of those, another option would be use a regular trailer instead of a compactor one with an open top that can be compacted, um, with a backhoe, I know that works, I've done it, I've done it, that's how we did it on Vinyl Haven. But there's a number of options of how to do this that might say spending a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a trailer to go with a compactor system that's already, that's also gonna need.
That, cause that's in very poor condition, right, the compactor itself?
Yeah.
The trailers that you're referring to, is that like what Orland has? No?
Well, the ones we have are not like what.
No, the ones Sue mentioned?
Yes.
Compacted, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
But I, I think that, that in looking at this before we, Danny at the transfer station came down and said, we need to order a new trailer. I said, hold on, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is a little above where we're going this week. So I, I think it's a good time to evaluate o- overall operations and see what we actually need in order to, do that and what the attendant cost for that would be for, to just have it picked up more frequently and, and not have to own all that stuff.
And the picking it up more frequently, like, we would handle that, right?
No, we don't have a, unless we got one of those vehicles that could do that, then we could do otherwise.
Isn't it just like a cabin chassis type deal?
A roll-off setup, yeah.
I mean, that's relatively inexpensive in the.
Less expensive than doing it the more complicated way, yes. So anyway, that's, again, that's not part of this budget, but, but, because that's a, um, but it is something that we need to do because of the condition of that trailer, we can't continue to rely on just one because when we, if that something happens, then we're out of business. So, that's just a preview of coming attractions in, um, the transfer station side of things. But, but I think what could happen is we could end up with a, something's a bit more efficient and less likely to fail, which is where we currently sit. And, okay, the cemetery, um, looks like the budget exploded and it did. But the Oak Hill Cemetery repairs is for the purpose of new fencing and tree removal at Oak Hill Cemetery using Wells Fargo Oak Hill Cemetery funds that are available, not tax dollars, in order to do that work. And that's why the increase in that.
Who's that, Oak Hill or River Road Road?
No, it's Oak Hill repairs, a hundred ninety-four.
Oh, I missed that one altogether, I was like, what, how did that go up, that's only three hundred, got it, thank you.
And that's the major difference in this. I really need to get a mouse to use this thing because this having to hold my finger down on the pad and move my other finger to make the thing scroll is really annoying. Okay, the next item is. I just, you need to, the purpose of tonight beyond reviewing public works and those things is to talk about what you want included or excluded in a, in a budget to come to you next week and to be referred out to a public hearing. Um, it, it, what you, what you put in that doesn't approve it. It just sends it to public hearing where you will then decide if it's what you want or what you don't want. And so the, the items related to social agencies, you generally, in the meeting before we do that, you decide what, where you wanna put things or what you wanna keep or what you wanna, level of funding you want to do. Um, right now, the way it sits, you're about thirty thousand dollars over where you, what your policy limit is.
Now, if we do move the library.
To recreation.
To recreation, that, that takes that right off the top of that, correct?
That's correct.
So that drops us, where do, I don't even remember exactly what.
Well, they asked for forty, but we, Sue recommended thirty-five.
They asked for forty, I recommended thirty-five.
Yep.
Um, we're at, with them in, we're at one eleven, four seventy-eight, and if you take thirty-five off that, you're under.
We're under, yeah.
The seventy-three, whatever. But that also includes, um, I made some recommend, recommendations based on budgets that you have dealt with in the past as a council. I, I adjusted the way you routinely have, you can certainly change those. But then, the American Legion, um, Brown Hall Committee were not, um, they weren't part of your, you haven't seen them before for committee for recom, for requests. So I didn't touch them, but they're, they're there depend, you know, in addition to what you had from prior years.
Included in the one eleven, obviously.
They're in the one eleven, yes.
Did WIC get in, I thought?
What's that?
WIC.
Well, they'd be under the manager recommendation on the one eleven, isn't it? Wait, ninety-four?
I need translation, oh, I see it now, main family planning, yep, thank you. They were late, right, well, they didn't, they didn't attend.
They were late, but they contacted us afterwards, so they, I was gonna say, they've, they've been traditional for years for the WIC program.
Yeah. I just didn't say that.
They, I mean, some of our differences is the childcare center has asked for six thousand dollars more this year than normal, um, than their usual. The, um, Bucksport, the Healthy Communities has asked for an additional five thousand dollars given the fact that they're taking on the Habitat for Humanity, Humanity program and, um, Thrive is, you know, I didn't see that that wasn't, and that they staff all of that for us. And, um, Home has asked for an additional two thousand dollars, but that seven thousand dollar investment in Home saves us a huge amount in general assistance overall, so.
I'm, I'm okay with putting the library over to recreation myself because they've put themselves in a whole different ballgame than just a social agency.
Yeah, I was in there today, it's hopping, and they had somebody signing up today who had just moved here with four kids and.
Yeah, we wanna see the good work, we've done good work, it'd be nice.
And we're really comparatively to what she gave us last time, we're really, we're not where we need.
Yeah.
I, I do wanna start focusing on the money we've given out, I mean, what merit are we getting, cause I'm not seeing it on some things.
Like what?
Prime example would be Main Street Bucksport, I'm just not, I know they're still doing good things, but we're not seeing what we used to see for our money. I'm not seeing it, maybe I'm just not paying attention, but.
That's out of, that's out of an economic development line.
It is, it's not, it's not up there, this is just a.
But tonight is where you tell me what to put in the, what you want included, and it's not limited to just these. If there's something else you want added or subtracted, I need to know that.
Well, while we're on that, Rich, can, can I ask you a couple of questions about that, in theory? Let me just, let me throw this one at you.
And let me clarify before you go, say that I'm not criticizing, they, they do good things, but twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And we did that three years ago, we kinda figured that in the budget, kind of, that we were getting a big return for it. I'm not seeing the return now.
It's tough to do without a director, somebody at the helm.
But I get, but.
I, I mean, I'm not, it is just tough to do without somebody there.
If they're going through a reorg, reorg and things are dead in the water on that front, that twenty thousand dollars for that, that it's out of your economic de, development line is, is where it's looked at from us?
Yes.
Where we did that hundred thousand dollar Main Street facade improvement deal, uh, year, was it a year ago? That helped, it helped spur a lot of, would that twenty thousand dollars be beneficial to something like that? If it was like four, five thousand dollar grants or ten, two thousand dollar, anything that would help spur any sort of Main Street facelift or any sort of business style facelift throughout town, if that, if that money went to something directly?
No.
That, that wouldn't help?
No, and I don't mean that disparaging. There's a couple of different missions of what you're looking at there, and when we're looking at these grants that we speak of, it spurs additional, um, from the property owner, and I think what we're doing is we're taking away from one section of economic development to try to encapsulate another area.
Okay.
You know, beautifying our downtown to make it more attractive, to attract business, yet asking one person and one entity to do all of that, does that make sense?
Yep.
Um, so what we've seen, uh, from the, uh, grants that we did is we saw some people say, I'm gonna do X, and they exceeded X by doing additional projects because that seed money helped them there, right?
Right, that's why, that's why I thought that twenty would go somewhere.
And matter of fact, we saw our, 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 our neighbors next door, outside of that program, do that as well as plans of the VPI potentially happening, the money the town gave and other people fixing up their buildings. I think that has helped spur a lot. I think the, I, I, I think the intention's good, um, can we get a lot, I, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
The people that should've took advantage of that program did not.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if we offer a lot less, that that's gonna spur them to do anymore. Uh, you joined me the other day for the open house at Dead River.
Yep.
Um, which is now, um, Round Homes in Millikan.
Yep.
What a fantastic job, not only inside the building, but the muck behind it is gone, you can see what's there, that, that's.
Yeah, looks good.
We, we need more of that, we need more cheerleaders. I would say that twenty thousand dollars would be better spent for a part-time employee that could help assessing code and economic development together.
Okay.
To fill in the gaps where Main Street Bucksport has fallen off.
Okay.
I think that twenty thousand dollars would be better utilized there because the three of us partner together in different aspects to help with economic development. Caitlin joins Luke on inspections, Luke joins Caitlin on, with assessments. They both join me when I have prospective business owners in here to understand tax implications, to understand code. We work together as a team and that person, whether it be ten hours, twenty hours, would really go a long way to helping further economic development because without a director at Main Street Bucksport, facts.
Yep.
One Facebook post in twenty twenty-four from Main Street Bucksport, one. The Bridge the Gap Race has traditionally had five hundred racers.
Yep.
I checked the results, there were one hundred and ninety-seven racers. Facts, Bridge the Gap Race is in conjunction with another group, so Main Street Bucksport is a beneficiary. They helped find volunteers, but there was, something happened where a fall off of five hundred people to a hundred ninety-seven. I liken it to, where was the marketing, where were the banners, where were the signs, where, where, where?
Have you talked with them? I mean, my concern would be if, if we allocate the twenty thousand to a paid position permanent and then they get back on their feet next year and then we've got Main Street Bucksport and a paid position, like, how would we handle that?
Well, what if for this year, we just kinda blanket it, left it a little bit open and said that it's for Rich for extra, or in Rich's line? It's for economic development, uh, resource management and understand that it's for, for backup for everything that's going on in economic development.
It, it's been kind of stale, so in the bylaws for Main Street Bucksport, you're allowed to serve X number of years, X number of terms. There are four people on the board and two of them have exceeded their term, one extremely far. Turnover has gone in one, it's gone one direction, it's gone down. There are four members, and one of the members has really put the heavy lifting on his back ensuring that the museum in the streets happened and partnering with the Y as best as they could to, for the Bridge the Gap. The only event that is a sole Main Street Bucksport event is the International Maritime Film Festival at this point. It's in the next fiscal year, so I don't think it's anything we need to fund at this point because it's, it's not happening now. It's already happened, and then you've got the Smores Lounge, which is part of the Holiday Lights Parade put on by the town. So it's not like when Main Street Bucksport came up with the fantastic idea of Bucks Box. That helped the businesses, that helped the owners. Since, and yeah, they need an ex, I believe it's gonna be hard to find it, after I just told you that the three of us could use an assistant, but, to find an executive director to do that same type of work.
Yeah, I mean, do they even have a budget for an ED?
Well, they, they sent me an email today asking for the balance of the twenty thousand dollars from this year's appropriation. They received six hundred dollars of it and we gave ten thousand dollars of it to the REACH School for their Boston trip. They've requested the balance of ninety-six hundred dollars for the purpose of um, administration and post office, upbox rent and insurance and contract assistance to do the film festival. And, um, indicated that their plan was to, in the coming year, was to hire an executive director because they can't do, you can't carry something out if you don't have someone to, to do the work, which, um, so I was going to speak to you tonight about the ninety-six hundred because we, when we, when we awarded the twenty thousand dollars this past year, you did it on the premise that, because you would, because there was going to be a reorg and there was gonna be things that happened, but it, we wouldn't just write a twenty thousand dollar check after the budget was adopted, which we had done in prior years when there was a director. That we would instead issue funds based on some activity or event that warranted money for some sort of event. And we did that for someone who did some work for them, um, on a contract basis, that was the, uh, four hundred dollars. But, um, the question is issuing the other, it was appropriated, it, it was, it was passed, but we, it, the blank at ninety-six hundred dollars is. The film festival's next year.
That's not what we agreed to.
Hmm?
So I don't, I don't mean to be obtuse, it's not what we agreed to. We didn't agree, that ninety-six hundred dollars wasn't, there was no conversation about, correct me if I'm wrong, but there wasn't a conversation about renting a post office box and, and funding, funding the reorganization.
And that's what I don't like to hear is administration, P O box.
Yeah, I wanna hear an event or some sort of production for the community or something tangible.
Well, you wait just a moment and I will tell you exactly what it says, so I don't misspeak. Because I, I was a bit. Okay, uh, Main Street Bucksport is requesting the remaining funds from the approved fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I believe this is nine thousand, six hundred dollars after ten thousand was redirected to the REACH School. This will help us cover administration costs such as insurance, website administration, phone, P O box rental, et cetera. It will also be used to cover contract labor to help run the International Maritime Film Festival. Our ultimate goal is to be in a position where we can hire a new executive director. It is very apparent that we cannot continue to provide the valuable service to the town of Bucksport without having that position filled. We also feel it is important to have a vibrant Main Street program as Bucksport hopefully moves forward with the VPI. Last Saturday, Main Street Bucksport partnered with the YMCA and had a successful Bridge the Gap Race. This was the first year for the partnership and provides us with a relationship, a strong relationship for the future.
And that, that was from Main Street Bucksport, they called it.
That, that was from, um, John Paul along.
They called the Bridge the Gap Race successful and it's down sixty percent.
Sixty percent, and for the third consecutive year, and Caitlin can neither vouch or not for me, but I was in, uh, Sweet Cheeks on Friday purchasing breakfast for our meeting and apologizing to the business owners for the third consecutive year that no one from Main Street Bucksport reached out to them about this race going in front of their building, not giving them the opportunity to earn full business, not being aware of the event, being able to market, advertise, or even sponsor. So I mean, it, it's fires like this that are continually have to be put out on a day off, which, whatever, I, my phone's, you know, I've always got my phone with me and I'm gonna always work, but it's fires like this that, the continual conversation and it just doesn't seem to go anywhere.
Sometimes I always feel like the reason it's so difficult for them to do that is because they need this structural support. And like, do we, with all of the other requests in this category, do we define that general operating support is not allowed? Like, is that consistent across the board? Because how are they gonna?
It's hard, it's hard to differentiate, it's hard to differentiate, and I think, at the end of the day, I think the value is where it is. The town's not gonna stop paying for downtown, right? So maybe it's a chance to stop, reorganize, take a breather and then come back. Because honestly, there is no event that is any longer put out, the art festival is no longer happening. There is no event that's gonna have a detrimental impact on the town if it does not happen. The Smores Lounge is part of the town's Holiday Lights Parade, someone else can easily pick that up. The, um, Bridge the Gap Race is primarily was Crow Athletics, it's now the YMCA. I, I would encourage you to have a conversation with the director and get his take on his definition of success was. Um, I had a conversation with Matt, um. So that leaves the International Maritime Film Festival, one event for three hundred sixty-five days for twenty thousand dollars is not providing the same impact that, and a person who could potentially be in here helping the three of us make these economic decisions for people interested in the town, um, that extra body would go a long way because that has a direct impact on the economic development, more so than, and, and it's, it's a great idea, I'd love to do, do it again, but I just don't think twenty thousand would do what we, we, we need to do.
Yeah, I was just looking for a place for it to actually make an impact, is what I was looking for.
An, an impact would be someone that could help the three of us continue to do what we're doing. We've had great success as the three of us, but sometimes that one-third of a person could actually go a, a long way in ensuring that, hey, you know, we really got this idea. But sometimes that one third of a person could actually go a, a long way in ensuring that, hey, you know, we really got this idea we wanna do. But these seven grants have to be administered.
Do you think the role, your guys' role will change much when your role changes next year? Like, will you be able to still carry that load that you're carrying?
I don't wanna speak for those guys, but if someone calls and they ask, I, I clean porta potties. I clean bathrooms, I, I paint, I, I mean, I know it's, you know, the town doesn't pay me to do that, but I also do that on a Sunday or a Saturday when I'm not being paid by the town, right? I'm always on the clock, so someone's always gonna say, why is he doing this? It's cause we care about this town. And, and realistically, trying to administer seven grants at one time and keeping X, Y, Z straight can sometimes be, I mean, if you look at my calendar, it's HUD. It's Washington D C, it's Senator Collins offices, Senator King's office, it's D O T, it's Mandy Oliver, it's on and on and on and on and on. And I'd like to do an event where we do, for example, I, I wanted to do an event where we go to all the local businesses once a month with marketing money. And for the Bucksport citizens to come in, two fifty off at, um, uh, the crumpet or two fifty off for the, you know, for the first X number of people. At, um, Bucksport Nutrition, something like that, that's, you know, it's bringing foot traffic in, hey, you know, maybe I haven't been here, but for two fifty off, I'll walk in here. And maybe now to become a regular citizen, that's more of an impact for our businesses than we're gonna do an International Maritime Film Festival one time a year. And I hate to say that because at its peak, when there were directors, there were lots of good things going on, but it's been stagnant, it's been stale. There's been no meetings in twenty twenty four, the website has not been updated with any minutes since twenty twenty one, there are no budgets anywhere on the website. It's still got Derek's contact information, the fact that they're still in Brown Hall, it's, they just got the website back, cause it was not the Main Street Bucksport website. I actually, I told Sue this earlier, I had to take it off my desk drive, cause when I went to click on, to make sure a, all the group's informations were accurate for the town's website. It was a gambling website, so I took it off of my computer, I believe they were able to get it back. Um, I know they were, cause I was on it today, so that's how I found out that information, so.
Can we, can we reallocate that twenty thousand?
You can, you can put twenty thousand dollars in there and, and allocate it anywhere you want to. You, but I guess that, that if this is the direction we're gonna go and I'm not saying, ah, yay or nay. That we just have to be clear with Main Street Bucksport that it, it's, it really, the issue right now is that, you know. Chicken, egg, you know, that we, if you compare them to something like Wednesdays on Main. Okay, Wednesdays on Main is X events. All for five grand, we get how many events every Wednesday throughout the summer season? Which is on Main Street or on the waterfront and has a, there's an impact there. People are coming downtown to, to see those things. And that, that targeted infusion of cash to that program is, is worthwhile. Or at least in my estimation, it's worthwhile because it's.
We could do that just, just for this year, for this year, that twenty thousand could be labeled for economic development support. Or whatever you decide it's called. And next year, we could talk about it again, but I, I don't wanna see twenty thousand dollars for economic development set idle, not be effective. Because there aren't anything going with that particular line item with that group. I'd rather see it allocated to a working body that's gonna help move the train forward.
Yeah, I mean, if they get back to what they were doing with grant writing and stuff, I mean, there is benefit, but they better get back to it.
Well, and that's just that, the, the funding formula that we've heard is it's X grant, X fundraising, Y town, the only constant is the Y, which is the town and. And maybe we can get back to that point someday, like I said, I'm not going to end, I, I, I pay, I pay the dues each year and they continually go up. Last year was seven fifty, I'm expecting it to be a thousand this year. Uh, but to keep that designation because I can get trainings, I can apply for grants, that's where the canopy grant came from last year for the tree count.
I support like adding stuff to help with economic development, but you can't write grants without a P O box. So it's sort of like, I just wanna be sure, we're not pulling the rug out from under an organization trying to reorg that did good work here once upon a time. And maybe the message to them is, you know, if, if, if it's better next year, come, come back when it's together, but. You know, you, everything we say they need, they need operating support to get. And so I'm a little sort of torn with that, that's all.
We could even do twenty thousand and leave it into a, a, a miscellaneous, not miscellaneous, cause I have one, but another account that if a group goes poor. Or, or Main Street Bucksport says, we wanna do this event, it's gonna cost X and Y. The Economic Development Committee can talk about it and they can approve it, it doesn't have to come directly through me. I think it'd be important for the committee to decide, well, yeah, that's worthwhile, let's do it.
We make a recommendation and they break that to the council.
Exactly, I, I, I think that would be more beneficial, um.
And if Main Street Bucksport had a proposal for something, they could.
Or a plan.
Or they could propose it to economic development and get it, get allocated that way.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, just like any other org, you kinda have to show your case, right? We need, even if it was for non-fun stuff like post office boxes, we need post office box to submit this grant, to do this event. To sort of lay it out to the town, what, what, yeah.
Right, well, but, but, and, and speaking about that, when you're an organization for X number of years, isn't their money already set aside for a P O box? Isn't there money left in, in, in the account to cover that? I mean, but, but no, I a hundred percent understand. I'll take, for example, the, the Ghost Port group, right? So the support that they get from the town for Ghost Port is, I do the printing for them. Um, I, I, we, we cross, we mark it together, there's no physical dollars that exchange hand, it's services, it's tangible. I can tell the council that we printed off two hundred thirty three flyers, put them in the purple folders at the school. And the attendance you saw down on the waterfront was from Ghost Port. There was no money exchanged in hands, it was services, it, it was using the printer, Cassie prints folds or my intern prints folds, it's. It's real, I, I can share those numbers with you. It was a success, we had X number of people and it cost the town council colored paper and printing.
I think it, I mean, I think at, at the end of the day, at least my two cents is this, as somebody who in years past has taken phone calls from people asking. What we expect for money given to Main Street Bucksport. And answered that question with confidence and then seen those things come to fruition, the Bucks Bucks being perhaps the best example, as well as other things. Like, there were other things where that money was being very well spent. I don't know how anyone on this council takes a phone call or has a conversation with a member of the public and answers the question, how, that ninety six hundred dollars that they asked for. What is, what did that go to? I don't, i- i- if you could explain it to me, uh, I'm all ears, but I, I don't, I don't know how you do it. And I don't know how you explain giving them a, 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 a sum of money in any different fashion than what we did this past year. Um, in terms of the money is there, the money is in the budget and if there's a plan, great, but until there's a plan, that, that, that money is going to stay there. It's not a knock on anyone personally, it's not, I, I'm appreciative of the work that's been done in the past, but I just don't know how anyone answers that question. Is what it is.
Having said all that, we still, at some point, you're probably gonna need a chamber or, you know, some organization, but I get what everybody's saying.
But for now, we can reallocate it for whatever progress we can grab.
To be applied for and, and run through economic development.
A program account, sort of like recreation as program.
Yep, yep, that's fine.
Does that work?
Yep, that works for me.
And did we agree to move recreation, to move the library to recreation or is that?
I'm in support of that.
We don't, we're not voting on approval, but I need the consensus, the numbers and whether you want them to go.
I want to probably number there too, I would go to your recommendation, thirty five to the library.
Yep, that's fine, they're doing a good job with the story walk and all the other stuff that they're doing, so they're producing.
They've, they are doing so many programs.
And they're recognized, I was somewhere, I told you this, I was in Bar Harbor in the last year and they were talking, oh yeah, Bucksport, that's a great library. It was Jessup Memorial, they were noticing the Renaissance.
Any other alterations, changes, additions, subtractions, multiplication?
With, with the American Legion, I have no problem giving them the money, but where we're at that meeting and they, they could sell it on their own, I think there ought to be a stipulation. If they sell it in five years, that, that comes back to the town.
The, all the, the ten thousand dollars, the ninety five hundred, yes.
Just that if they're gonna sell it, I mean, because we shouldn't just be funding.
The pre-sale.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
So it, what kind of time period do you wanna give them? We can call it a forgivable loan.
Five or ten years, a minimum of five, I would say.
Five's pretty standard, isn't it? For forgivable loans, isn't five?
Five.
We did five years, we was in law.
Yeah, that's past practice, go five.
Yeah. Five?
After that, they can do what they want, but, yeah, and to be clear, if they still own buildings five years, they don't.
They're not even gonna. Okay, how are we gonna distribute this? Here's a check for ninety five hundred dollars, are we gonna say?
Bring in repairs total in two?
And, you know, show us what you're buying or, or paying for or.
It's for the roof, correct? There was a, a few different things, there was a roof.
There were several things, cause they said they wouldn't be back for a few years, but I.
I would see a problem with them producing a receipt to get reimbursed up to.
I don't know if they've got enough to buy it up, I'm sure they don't have enough to buy it up front, but if they, and I'm not trying to be difficult here, I'm just saying that. If writing them a check for ninety five hundred dollars when we just for, said you don't have to pay a sewer bill for a year because you.
Right, but they'll obviously.
Are in the process of, of.
Right.
Trying to get themselves up and running again and their building fixed.
Cause six months ago, we didn't think that was gonna make it.
Right, and they're definitely trying to breathe new life into that, they are on it.
As a group as a whole.
Yes, talking to the Boy Scouts and all kinds of things, so, yeah.
So how would you recommend?
So I, I guess that what I, if you're not uncomfortable with this, if they. I'm not just gonna approve a check for ninety five hundred dollars to go to the reason.
Blank.
Without me being able to say to somebody, it, it, they, they did the roof, they're, they're gonna do the roof, they're gonna, you know. Give me an estimate and I'll give you.
Yes.
Money, is that?
Yeah, with a project date, with a, with a projected date of when the contractor.
Just because we.
Yeah.
Get to the estimate and then come get a check when it's complete, looking for the safest.
Well, give me an estimate and who's doing it and we'll write them a check or, you know, that.
Unless it's complete, yeah.
You know, that kind of thing, only because this is a new organization, we haven't. And, and the few that we write the checks for, we, that is all in one lump, we, we generally know what that expense is. I mean, it's clear with Bucksport, they healthy communities, that the check we write pays for that person to operate those programs that we've identified. That are important to us, I can with a straight face say, well.
Yep.
That that is.
So we did the same thing with Wilson Hall, there were things that Larry said that he would do and those were included in the legal documents that I wrote up.
And he couldn't get the money from us until they had been done.
In that area, I'm not sure how I feel about Brown Hall Committee, words, I don't know.
I, I fully support it, I think it's been an engaged group of people that are bringing, they've brought improv, um. Last week or the week before, they've got the, um, art group every Wednesday, which is a regular round. And they do their council forums, oh no, not the committee, actually, that's the hall, so scratch that one. But the, I think they're, and they've only asked for two thousand.
I'm not against it, I'm just. It kinda seems like it's money going towards a select group of people, but.
It does bring some culture to town and, you know, it's a trial run, let's see.
And where it's only two thousand, I'm not gonna stand here and stomp my foot, but, no, but.
I would say if it enables them to do more of what they did, some of the things they did last year, I, I, they did one concert in particular that, um. Was pretty good and very, very well attended and I think, um, I, I, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and dispute the fact that. There's certainly, um, a population of town that that serves more than others, but I, I, there's a number of things that I do appreciate about what they're trying to do there. Um, as well as their, their mission around, you know, keeping separate from the church, nothing against the church, but I'm. Finding it with public money, so yeah, yeah.
And I'm fine with giving them money, especially if we, if I keep hearing their name, that's kinda what I gauge things on is.
Yeah.
How frequently am I hearing these?
Last year, they had a couple of events canceled because the heat system died in the location. So they had this big spaghetti supper or murder supper or something, but the furnace, I can't say what I was just about to say. It hit the bed. And so they had to cancel at last minute, but I think they have pretty decent planned attendance to that.
If, if I may.
Yep.
I think that should be moved under community and economic development, it's similar to what Main Street Bucksport and these other groups are doing. They're putting on events, bringing people into the community and I would fully support having that line item under economic development. Instead of social community agencies.
Then they come through economic.
And then they come through, in the future, yes, that they would come through economic development.
Yep.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, they're a, they're a fixed location though, correct? They operate right out of Brown Hall.
That's, yep.
Right, that's it.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just.
Again, any of these, we should be looking at, at outcomes when, next year, when you look at what they did. Yeah.
Every group should be able to say, the X amount of dollars that we received, enable us to. And, and the con, the inverse of that is if we don't have that money, it won't, what that means is we won't be able to. It seems to, seem to be pretty basic.
Right. So with those adjustments, that move, that puts us well, well within our, our one percent range.
Well under.
Well under, is that right, Sue?
Yes, that is correct.
I will mention something as a potential, potential addition to the, um, budget, because I've had several counselors mention it to me. And I, I will include myself in this group, we would like new chairs. These chairs.
As in mares or chairs?
Well, that, that, I'll leave that up to you.
So that would come out of town office equipment reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we will talk about that when we talk about the individual, what are we gonna do with those?
Sure.
But I, nobody ever told me they wanted a chair.
No, I know, I, no, that's all on me, that, yeah, several times.
I'm too new to complain.
No.
We just like something quieter for the microphones.
Yeah.
Something.
This is nothing that you failed to do.
Consider it like a, a work safety.
I thought of it.
Cooling, massage.
We've got a heat pump, guys.
I know that.
The walls are painted, we have a heat pump and we have this very cool screen over here.
Milk crates it is, those won't make any noise, we'll take it.
Okay, chairs, chairs.
Well, Steve and I.
Do we have to go on a group shopping trip?
No.
Have someone bring in something to?
No. At your, at your discretion.
Yeah.
I hear, now that you mention it, I can hear it every time you move. The key is to sit still and that doesn't.
It's hard when you sit still in these chairs.
I'm like a five year old, I can't sit here still.
Okay.
Thank you for taking the heat off me, cause I know.
And that's what I'm picking on the chairs.
I'm sure you all hear this, like half the media, that's me, I've gotten used to it.
Um, thank you so much, I was trying to.
Okay, I've got new chairs. Got a raise last year, you're gonna get, you're gonna get chairs this year.
I, hey, listen, live in the highlight.
Whoa.
Um. Do you have the number that you need now for, for to bring to?
Yeah, if these, is there anything else you want me to do to the budget before I bring it back? You've, you've heard everybody's everything. The education numbers, you've all seen the information from the superintendent, it's an eight point three, eight point oh three percent increase. With the, without taking out the stuff that, I. The overall budget, including the school, including the, uh, county sixteen point. Including the uh county sixteen point six percent increase. Our four point nine seven, the overall bottom line is five point one percent.
And what would that do to our tax base?
I don't know yet. Well, I, I should've said, I will know better after I get all the assessment numbers from our assessor. But but the. Some of the biggest drivers are things that I can't do anything about. Not that we don't have our own, because we built that into the budget last year when we added three people for. For fire and knew that that was gonna be an ongoing expense.
I did meet with Superintendent Boothby on Thursday and went through the budget with him and all of their their increases are. Uh, there's no fluff there, to put it bluntly, there's nothing, it's all salaries that are in their third year of a contract negotiation pay raise. And energy and infrastructure costs.
State mandates, federal mandates.
Yeah.
There's only so much they can do.
That, that's absolutely true, um, I asked today and didn't get an answer, at the end of the session. The the state added twenty-one million dollars to education. In this year's budget. And I asked, what, how much of that is ours, is that? The state has already sent out this two seventy-nine, which is the form that says how much you're gonna get for educational assistance. But since that is part of the budget, I I asked if they would be updating the two seventy-nines because they know they're going to get it. It has been approved, even though the budget won't technically go into effect because it wasn't a two-thirds majority. It it takes ninety days or whatever to get there, they still know it's gonna be there, so. Um, Superintendent Boothby hasn't gotten back to me on that, but. If we get some of that, it would reduce, because everything that is in the increase is local share. And it, that would offset local share if we got some more, I can't promise anything, but that's another one of those numbers that I'm. I'm thinking ought to be discussed somewhere, because if they get twenty-one million, if there's twenty-one million dollars. Appportioned across the districts in the state, we get some of that.
My biggest takeaway from him was that their cost per student, he showed me a a chart, a table of nine. Local communities and RSUs and our cost is uh the fourth lowest on the list. And for what we provide for services outlined with that compared to the cost of other uh RSUs or school organizations. For what they offer, we're in really good shape in comparison to to others, so.
And he will be coming to the meeting on the sixteenth, I'm glad you saw him cuz you're not good to make it, but he will be coming to the meeting on the sixteenth to talk to you.
And how much did we have set aside, cuz we didn't spend the, not the extra we got in the past couple of years, but.
We spent some of that extra last year, we s- are supposed to be spending more of that extra this year.
How much is there, four or something or more?
There was four, we u- no, there was four, we used three, we've got a hundred thousand dollars to use this year.
To help offset the.
No, yeah, I I had a good conversation with the superintendent as well and uh when I look at some of these numbers, if you if you don't know, I I spent seven years as. The chair of the school board here, um, about fifteen years ago and that's, that pu- per pupil cost is an interesting one. Because I can remember, um, it wasn't even over ten thousand dollars just a little over a decade ago, um, and I don't believe the state average was either. Um, I I remember when it did hit that shortly after my time, it, my point in saying all that is that. The costs of just having a school are there. We're very fortunate that the that the RSU was one that did not enter in an agreement to have multiple high schools at the time. Um, which was the initial conversation um back then, um, because it would have, that would have fallen apart. Um, but also it's just the costs involved of having those schools running, it doesn't matter if you have five hundred kids or three hundred and fifty kids. Or what, the costs are there, um, and when, and quite frankly, the the bottom line is the the. The RSU is going, they've made reductions um in staffing, they've reduced uh um positions. So, um, and I know those are difficult decisions to make too, um, but and we all know the cost of everything is going up. So anyway, it was a good conversation just to kinda um revisit a budget that they used to spend a lot of time in, but just in terms of. The more things change, the more things stay the same, and that certainly is where we are with that. I look forward to him being here next week to um to to walk through any of those questions.
And I'll also have your PowerPoint that shows you how your revenues fit in.
With the great pictures?
With the great, I'm gonna try and change up some of the pictures, I choose the same ones the last couple of years, just because it's easier to just. Change the numbers than it is to find those little geop things that dance and.
Any other questions on budget before we, and you have everything you need, including the request for new chairs?
Oh, whatever happened to the upstairs improvement isolation? Am I the only one that heard this? Yeah, to to put a a door and a wall up.
Another way out from either the window?
Yes.
That's the one.
Properly install glass, like you, we were talking, I mean, this was, was talking about before I even came on council five years ago.
Yes.
Yes, what?
Yes, we've talked about it, we have not, we have not asked anyone for a price to put a door in the side of it. Or just put a wall across so it's not easy access to go down through.
I gotta say, can we not kick the can on that?
Well, you're gonna be hiring a new manager in another year and I'm sure they'll wanna be safer than I am, so we'll, we'll make sure that it's done before you get another.
Wanna not forget about that, cuz it seems like we're forgetting about it.
I I, I'm not making light of it, I'm the one that the guy came in and thought was the devil, the police had to drag him out, but. We haven't, we haven't done construction that.
Well, but. So everybody, everybody in the office, so even if that door's locked, the plexiglass isn't gonna hold you out, I mean.
We've done the research and getting prices on everything else, why don't you add that to the list to do the research and get the prices on it, so we at least know what we're talking about?
To cake in that smell. He's been.
Has he been after you?
Speaking of people needing more than one clone to get stuff done, this, hours in the day, days in the week.
That's right. Message to ask, but I will, anything else?
I'll add one thing in my report, a citizen got ahold of us, there's a typo in my report, I don't know if you got that.
Got the new one.
I got the new one.
Yep.
The citizen is now in recovery because of D C Rochester, Sager will be not, not in recovery, but now he is in recovery, so.
Anyone else? Do appreciate the conversations evening folks and the discussion, um, the next item on the agenda however, and we will not be taking action coming out of this. Is the town manager evaluation, which requires us to move into executive session pursuant to M R S A Title One, Section four oh five, six A.